Okay, welcome everyone to the North Sanitation District meeting. I like to call this meeting to order at this time. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni. Dr. Dazma Val.
Here.
Ms. Buena Ventura. Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mrs. Sylvester.
Present. Thank you so much. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for this evening. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the agenda.
First and the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, any polls? Any abstentions? Okay, the agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, first. Stay a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on the consent agenda, on the motion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, I've heard five ayes that time. Okay, so the consent agenda is approved. Public appearances, oral communications. Do we have anything, Stephen, or comments that may have been received?
I believe the comments that were filled out for this one are for public comment in City Council. Let me just look at the last one.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, no public comments for this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports. Do we have any reports from the Board of Directors? Colleagues, council members? All right, moving on. Any reports from staff?
Sir.
No, sir.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Picalati. I'm sorry about us being a little late, but thank you.
No problem.
All right. All right, sir. So hearing done, looks like this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. That concludes this meeting. All right. Okay, moving on. I like, we have everyone available. Okay, nobody's left. I'd like to now call this meeting now to order. Daily City's Council Meeting. Today is Monday, September 28th. And like to again, call this meeting to order. May we all please rise for the pledge to the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic of the Philippines.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Present.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is proclaiming September 2020 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And Dr. Barry Chaucer of Radiation Oncology Department, H.A.H.M.C.C. Medical Center is here to accept the proclamation. Stephen, would you be so kind to read the proclamation for us, please?
Okay, it says prostate cancer awareness month, September 2020. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second leading cause of cancer deaths in men. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates there will be 191,930 new cases of prostate cancer in the USA in 2020, resulting in an estimated 33,330 deaths. And whereas it is estimated 20,160 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and it is estimated 3,890 California men will die from this disease this year. And whereas the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 31% when it spreads to other parts of the body. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that men should have an opportunity to make the informed decision about whether to be tested for prostate cancer based on their personal values and preferences. And whereas the city of Daly City joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their healthcare provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. Now therefore, I, Glenn R. Sylvester, mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Daly City, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in Daly City.
Thank you, Stephen. Is Dr. Chaucer here?
Can you hear me?
Yes, doctor. Please, go ahead. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I want to thank you and all the council members for the opportunity of recognizing September as prostate cancer month. The problem of prostate cancer is noted in the proclamation is doesn't rest for COVID-19 or forest fires. In fact, the disease keeps progressing and causing the morbidity and mortality as it continues to march on. We need to call attention to men to look and discuss with their medical care providers about early detection because it can offset some of the late problems that the disease can produce. And so I thank you again on the behalf of all men. And I urge you and your, any of your family members and friends to tell them to talk with their medical providers about obtaining adequate counseling and getting care. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chaucer. Is there any comments from my colleagues before I make one?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please. Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Yeah, Dr. Chaucer, having had members in my family that had prostate cancer, I want to thank you that I know that you stayed on the top edge of cures and early detection and encouraging men now more than ever that I think the awareness itself, which you have been a big part of it, makes them feel more at ease and being able to get treatment. And treatment is different. And I encourage all the men in everyone's lives to pay attention because early detection is everything. And I know that it does save lives. So thank you, Dr. Chaucer, for everything you do in your field and for, in this particular case, prostate cancer. And thank you, mayor.
Thank you for those kind words.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Oh.
Oh, yes, okay. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I wanted to say thank you, Dr. Chaucer, and really the importance of public health education and what you continue to do, most especially in our community, is so important. And that educational piece around prevention is key. And that you continue to usher that through forward within our communities. And if there's anything, I think, of course, I think the city will agree if there's anything that we can do in order to spread the word from you. If there's any events, I'm sure that the city would be happy and willing to share it on our information sites. So thank you so much.
And I'll keep that in mind if anything is moving ahead. It would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Dr. Rod.
Thank you, Dr. Chaucer, for putting this out there. I think this is a crucial and urgent message for our community, especially among men and trying to break the stigma about prostate cancer. Because usually, there's a very masculine machismo when it comes to getting your health check amongst men. And based on what the proclamation said, it is necessary to be open and be open with your doctor. And seeing the high rates amongst men of color is an alarming rate to not be scared or have a culture mistrust of medicine, but to really be able to talk, to expressive, be expressive about getting and discussing this type of cancer. And I've had family members too that has had prostate cancer. And for a lot of them, they usually wait till almost it's, you know, you don't have any more time left. So thank you for putting this in our radar.
And that's another reason for reviewing your family history. There's a lot going on with cancer, with genomics now. And particularly in prostate cancer, we're finding that the family history is very strong, not just for family, not just for prostate cancer, but for other cancers, there can be a linkage to the incidence of prostate.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Anyone else? Okay, Dr. Chaucer, thank you so much. Every year you come to us to bring about the awareness. And it is so much appreciated. Alluding to what Dr. Rod said earlier, we tend to forget the little things, but a checkup, it's very easy and it should be done. And it's very, very important. I'd like to thank you so much for coming back to us and bringing about this awareness. It is my understanding that it is yom kippur. And I appreciate you taking the time out tonight to be with us. And then looking over some of the email exchanges that I received from city staff, I wanted to let my colleagues know, and I have it here, it says, "By the way, Dr. Chaucer wants to let council to know Seton is heading in the right direction." So thank you so much, Dr. Chaucer. You ought to be commended, sir.
Thank you all very much, and please stay safe. We need you all.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Dr. All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, and that is proclamation proclaiming October 20th as Filipino-American History Month. And we have Mr. Jim Rumor of Kumu, the Kumu co-founder and chief of staff of Kumu. Stephen, we'll put this on you again. Would you kindly read the pro, please?
Okay, this is the proclamation for Filipino-American History Month. And it says, "Whereas the city of Daly City commemorates Filipino-American History Month each October, a month-long observance to honor and share the rich tapestry of Filipino-American art, history, and culture. And whereas this year, the entire Daly City community is invited to Casa Yahan sa Daly City, a Filipino-American History Month celebration virtually on Saturday, October 10th at 1:00 p.m., a day filled with music, dance, crafts, and fil am cuisine. And whereas the event will be held virtually and live on Facebook, YouTube, and Kumu, a Filipino community platform where users and viewers can livestream, play live games, engage and chat with other users globally. And whereas the event will consist of a variety of demonstrations and clips provided by the Department of Library and Recreation Services, Jeepney Guy, Escobo Dan, Karik Tan Dance Company, Daly City Teens, and many more. And whereas the entertainment lineup includes performances by Janelle Ferraro, Zena Ira, Melvin Sings, and many others. And whereas Daly City's Department of Library and Recreation Services has partnered with ABS-CBN/TFC and Kumu to help further develop Casa Yahan sa Daly City into Daly City's signature community festival and to provide the event virtually for the first time to the community and globally. And whereas along with the consul general, Henry Espin Serto Jr., the Philippine consul general to San Francisco, the city of Daly City encourages youth to embrace the Spark Connect Empower Movement within the Filipino-American community to strengthen familial and ancestral connections with the Philippines. Now therefore, I, Glenn Sylvester, mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Daly City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Filipino-American History Month in Daly City."
Thank you, Stephen. Jim, I'm going to turn the floor over to you, sir.
All right. Hello. Thank you for everyone having me here tonight. Mayor, Vice Mayor Justin, nice to see you again. And I'm part of Kumu. I am the co-founder and chief of staff of Kumu. And it's a Filipino livestreaming app, which was still developed in California by a bunch of Filipino-Americans. And me being one of them, coming from the Bay Area, going to Casa Yahan and going to other San Francisco Bay Area Filipino-American events, it's only right for our company, Kumu, and ABS-CBN-TFC to give back to the Filipino-American community. This is one of our very first chances to be able to connect our company and the Philippines and our 7 million downloads around the world. Most more importantly, it's the Philippines, Middle East, Canada, and North America that we're connecting and bridging the gap to have Casa Yahan, so Daly City, and all their events in Daly City to be featured and to be focused all around the world globally, virtually, in this virtual event. Obviously, it's usually held in Daly City, but this year, being held virtually, ABS-CBN, TFC, and Kumu, we're going to be the awesome, awesome hosts and co-presenters to highlight the talents, to highlight the rich history of Daly City. And for me, being a Filipino-American, knowing that the rich history of Daly City means so much to the Filipino-American. It is this trend-setting place. It's the only city that we, where I truly believe that it starts with us, Daly City, for Filipino-American cultura, right? And I think that having this event and being Kumu being a part of it, it's only going to do great things for the future. And I'm looking forward to many more events with Daly City. Obviously, we are a Filipino platform with most of our users in the Philippines, but this is the best way to connect and bridge the gap for all the folks in Daly City to feel back home to the Philippines. And the same thing, I want the Filipinos in the Philippines to see what's going on in Daly City, to see why it's so rich in history, why it's so important Filipino cultura in America, why Daly City is the number one premier spot for us. And I just want to say thank you to the, to the all of City Council for allowing ABS-CBN, TFC, and Kumu to be part of this awesome experience and to be part of Filipino-American History Month. And this is our first event too for Filipino-American History Month. And I'm so, so super proud that it's in the Bay Area, and more importantly, it's in Daly City, where Filipino-Americans thrive. And it's a city where I look at it as a breeding ground of culture and creativity. And I cannot wait to be, have a chance in the future to be, to be part of more different events in Daly City. And that's all I have, Mayor. Vice Mayor, thank you so much again. Like I said, Madamisalamat for having me here today. And let's go Daly City. Let's have a great 2020, rest of the 2020.
Thank you, Jim. You got me smiling because I got something for you in a moment. I'm going to open it up for my, I'll go open it up for my colleagues for any comments.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may address James. Thank you. Thank you so much. This is so exciting that your first event of as far as Filipino-American History Month is in collaboration with the city of Daly City. And you know, the staff here in City of Daly City has really been able to pivot through digitally to reach our residents and community members. And now with your partnership with ABS-CBN and with your company, you said it, we're going to be able to reach a global platform across the world and really be able to share, you know, some of the talent and culture that we have here that has transpired from the Philippines, that has been birthed also as Filipino-Americans here in the United States. And so just wonderful to hear this partnership. Thank you for your sponsorship and support in providing this avenue. I'm excited to participate and see what you are all doing. I'm sure Romeo has been working very hard to see him on here. And yeah, just amazing to see this. And I can't wait to see it. And like you said, you know, this is an opportunity to connect and not only connect within the Bay Area. I love how we're going to connect all around the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, yes, Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Actually, I want to say to you, James, even, even me, definitely, when the consul general adopted me as official over here of the EMPNI, and dealing with a lot of different cultures with Bebok, with Father of the Little Oaks, and I'm very familiar, believe it or not. And I'm happy, happy that we're going to go worldwide so we can share that culture, share what beauty it has. We have so much to offer, and that just touches it just a bit, right? I mean, just a bit with everything that we have, from all genres that we have here in Daly City. You know, we're famous for our DJs, Filipinos. We're famous for so many things. And you are bringing it to another scope, and you have joined us. So you know, you're, you're part of Daly City. You're going to stay with us. TFC, you know, they're our family too, ABS-CBN, our consul general. And this is family, family here that's all supported and connected. And that is what he says when connection and empowerment. So you are doing it. You are actually doing it. So, and you are taking the action to do it. So all around the world, they're in Dubai. I know the Filipinos are everywhere. And they will feel that sense. They need that. I think more than ever during this COVID, perhaps culturally, even though they're in areas pockets of the world, they're not in Daly City. And we are special, the most in our mainland, and we should really highlight that. And as you see, not just on our council, but in everywhere in our recreation with Romeo, just the idea that people partner. People join in from even other cultures because it's just such a great culture to be so happy, so resilient about the dancing, the music, so much to offer. Yes, even the food, the lumpia, everything that's connected. So I'm excited. We're going virtual, and it's going to be on our October the 10th. And it's going to be, I believe, one to three or whatever. I know you guys have the details. And from my heart to yours, salama. And I just want to make sure that you know that we have the Bahamian spirit here, and it transcends through everyone, even when I'm at the second harvest all throughout our city. So that's very special. So Italians and Filipinos, we have a lot in common. So eating and talking and laughing and right, and conjuring all kinds of five, five conversations at once. We know everything that's going on. So welcome. And this is just a stepping stone and to memorialize what we're doing here in Daly City. And I mean, beyond, next year we'll be together. So
Yes, for sure.
I'm banking on it. But to everyone out there, salama and maganu maga, and we're going to do this. Very exciting. And thank you, Romeo Recreation, and all our partners and the consul general. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you much, Councilmember. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you, Pam.
It's exciting.
I see Dr. Rod, he's ready to go. Go ahead, Dr. Rod.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to James. I'm kind of familiar with your app. I was the community grand marshal for Pistahan, San Francisco this past year. And I think the great was, usually Pistahan is only like a Bay Area thing, and to go globally. And then cousins of mine from the Philippines, like, oh, and Manong Rod was there. Cool to, to reach out to, that's in Canada, to the Philippines, and everywhere, everywhere in the, around the world. And it's just so ironic that we're, you know, that you're teaming up with Daly City because one of my mentors, Dr. Benita Vigara, in his book, he calls Daly City Pinoy Capital. And that's what it is, right? Where we, we're like the, you know, like the Pinoy capital, but you know, there's many other capitals around the United States. And, and it was crazy too. I was, I was actually featured on one of my friend's Kumu channels about two weeks ago, Lisa Florida.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, so what was crazy, she was talking about this app, and then I actually know Roland from way back when.
Yeah, yeah.
This organization in SoCal called SEPASA, Southern California Filipino-American Student Association, back in the late 90s. So it's really cool, people in our generation using our digital talents to reach out to the whole world. And it really comes down to really talking about why this is important. And I always bring it up to my mentor, Dr. Don Mobalan, who was a Filipino-American history professor at San Francisco State. And she said, "There's three essential questions in ethnic studies. Who am I? What is the, what is the history of my people? And by understanding our history of our people, what are we going to do with it and our responsibility to the community?" So I think that's what you, Kumu's doing along with Romeo and Parks and Rec. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you much, doctor. I really appreciate that. And I'll send Roland my regards as well. I'll meet with them later today. And he is the CEO, founder, and who brought this to life from LA. And he called me like the Avengers Initiative. He called me in the Bay Area and said, "Hey, let's activate this." And if you guys didn't know, all of the Filipino-Americans from California, we moved, and we dropped everything in California and moved to Manila to start this app. And we want to give it back to where we come from. And obviously, I'm from the Bay Area, and Daly City is the Pinoy capital of the United States. I'll claim it. I'll say it right now, you know? And I live all up and down California, but Daly City is really in the forefront for me anytime I think about Filipino-American history, right? I am from Eastside San Jose, but nonetheless, I grew up knowing about Daly City culture, pride and history. So yes, I'm very excited about those three things that Dr. Don Mobalan said about connecting and knowing your history. And we do that, right? And we're going to keep on bringing it back to where we're from, our roots as well, and in the Philippines and in the Middle East because the connections are so important. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Anyone else? All right, Jim. You know, the world is such a big place, and we know that. And you know, I've been to the Philippines, and when you're on an airplane for 16 hours, it becomes amazing, as Dr. Rod alluded to, that the world is actually made much smaller via the digital, the digital aspect. And for us to be known as the Pinoy capital, which I appreciate you saying, you're basically not only providing the richness of our city, but you are basically bringing our city close to all those around the world. And basically, it works both ways. You are putting Daly City on a map and on a much bigger map. I am so proud, say, that our Department of Recreation and we in Daly City support every effort you put forward. That is why we have a good relationship with ABS-CBN, because we love them, and we will do whatever we can. So you have an impressive lineup, and you will see that Daly City does not just talk, but we also walk the walk. So what I had for you, what I was going to say in the beginning, because I heard you say, "Madamisalamat", I was going to say to you, "Bagaan ng gabi". So I wish you the best of luck. And we look forward, we look forward, we will be here for you.
Thank you so much, Madamisalamat Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of City Council for giving us the opportunity to be part of this and for cheers for future activations and partnerships for more events to bring the Filipino citizens around the world and Daly City closer together by virtual events. And let's do it. Let's have fun this month for Filipino-American History Month. Thank you so much, everyone here in the City Council and both mayors.
Outstanding. I heard Romeo's name mentioned. Is he part of your crew or part of your staff as well?
Romeo's been, been, by far, the most helpful person for me for this partnership and for ABS-CBN. So Romeo, thank you so much as well for helping out Kumu and ABS-CBN and, you know, navigating us through this process with Daly City. Really appreciate it, Romeo.
Thank you so much. I saw Romeo there, and my life experience has always told me, you got to be careful for the quiet ones. But I bet you, he does a lot of work. There you go. Thank you so much, Romeo, and we look forward to working with you as well. Okay, shall we move on? We ready? All right. Thank you so much, gentlemen, and we're going to continue on. Okay, the next item is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of September 14th. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval of the minutes.
Minutes.
First, D. Giovanni, second by the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Ray?
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay, thank you so much. The next item is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the agenda.
First by Vice Mayor, second by Dr. Rod. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Rod, you made the motion. Okay, that motion carries. The next The next item is the consent agenda. And is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember DG Giovanni, we have a first and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any, uh, no's, any abstentions? Okay, that motion passes, we are now moving on to public hearings. Item number five, introduction of an ordinance adding chapter 5.92 to the Daly City Municipal Code and adoption of the short-term rental fees. And before we get into this matter, I would like to, Madam City Attorney, please correct me if I'm wrong. I would like to put this matter aside at this time. Given the inordinate amount of emails and responses that we have received from the community and also the proponents for short-term rentals, I feel that we require more time. What we are trying to do here is to come to some sort of an agreement between our community, who are very concerned, and at the same time, the folks who are conducting STRs. We want to hear from everyone and offer everyone the opportunity. So my colleagues, I would request that we consider putting this matter over for another day. Madam City Attorney, can you provide your opinion on this matter?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, it appears that you would like the council to consider continuing this matter to a date certain. As Mr. Mayor has indicated, there has been additional materials that have been provided to the council for consideration of a public hearing, which would definitely be considered at the continued date. I would suggest to the Chair, continuance to a date certain, potentially looking at November 9th, council meeting for continuance on the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney, so I would like to make that, would it call for me to make that motion?
That's correct, yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, at this time, I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, is there any further discussion from my colleagues on this matter? Hearing done, may I have a roll call, should I do?
Sure, you can have a roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, roll call please.
Ms. DG Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye, thank you very much, I thank my colleagues and that, that motion will be set for another day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to communications, item number six, use permit UPR-8-20-14639 and design review, veterinary hospital and parking lot expansion at 2201 Juniper Sarah Boulevard. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Longhausen, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvester, I'm just going to bring my presentation up on the screen. One second. Having a little trouble bringing the presentation up on the screen. Not sure why.
Okay, take your time, Mike.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, good, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Good. Okay, this is a, uh, consideration of a use permit and design review for the expansion of the Blue Pearl Veterinary Hospital at 2201 Juniper Sarah Boulevard. This item went before the planning commission earlier this month and the planning commission's making a recommendation to the City Council on this item. The, again, the site location is at 2201 Juniper Sarah. The current zoning of the site is both light commercial and manufacturing. The site is the, we commonly refer to as the Dunn Edwards Building. There are actually several uses inside that building now, including Dunn Edwards. There's a dialysis to beat a dialysis center there. And then of course, an existing Blue Pearl Veterinary Hospital and that's what's expanding into a mezzanine area. These are the site photos of the building. Again, you're probably familiar with it, right, if you, as you enter the, or exit rather, northbound 280 onto Juniper Sarah. There's no physical expansion of the building that's proposed, so the building won't get any bigger. It's just that the veterinary hospital is moving into the mezzanine area as well as they've proposed a, the construction of an additional parking lot to provide parking for the proposed use. Uh, these are just photographs of the existing parking lot that exists on the site. So again, the proposal is to expand an existing veterinary hospital to the second floor of the existing building. The expansion would constitute, constitute 10,681 square feet. The use permit would allow the expansion of the current activities in the veterinary hospital, including expansion of emergency and specialty services. The applicants proposed a clientele growth of approximately 10% to more than 45 clients per day and the addition of 10 to 15 new employees for a total of 20 to 25 employees working at the clinic during peak periods. As I'd mentioned, the proposal includes construction of a 26 space parking lot to the south of the existing lot to satisfy the zoning ordinance requirement for additional parking. The City Council may have noted in the staff report that there was some recalculation of some of the parking that was necessary to allow the parking provision to match the zoning ordinance parking count. And we feel it's an equitable allowance and that's explained in the staff report and we can get into that as needed. All of the parking for this use is contained on site, for any of you that are familiar with that area, there's really no ability to park anywhere else but on site, so it's sort of a self-contained issue, the parking is, so. So this is the existing site plan, again, this is Juniper Sarah Boulevard, Citrus Avenue, there's a service station right across the street here. Parking fields here on the east side of the building, 59 parking spaces exist. The applicant's proposing to, maybe just go back to the slide, to the south would expand, so you would drive through heading south. You would enter a new proposed parking area in this area here. And there would be a 26 additional spaces that would be provided there. This property is under the control of the city and the city staff is working with the applicant on a long-term agreement to allow for the construction of this parking lot. And I believe those negotiations are well underway. These are the, this is a street level floor plan, existing and proposed, the existing veterinary hospital. Again occupies portion of the first floors and is proposed to move into the second level. And this is the mezzanine floor plan, kind of hard to read all the exact things that are happening here. But again, just an expansion of the use into this mezzanine level. About 9,200 square feet here and just, you know, more acute care for animals that would occur here and just an expansion of that use in general. Use permit consideration for the City Council is overnight animal boarding. Usually what we're looking at in situations like this is to make sure that adequate noise insulation or distances provided so that nearby residents aren't bothered by overnight animal boarding. In the case of this use, the, a lot of the animals are sick or injured, so they don't, they're not really that noisy. And there are no real residential uses that are close by, so. It's kind of a no-brainer on this one, at least for us, in terms of there not being any impact in the neighborhood. Adjacent seat residential, I discussed that, really not that much residential. Parking, 59 current spaces, 26 additional proposed for 85 total. And again, this meets the parking requirement as explained in the staff report. Design review consideration, the applicants proposed, of course, expanding the parking lot. So this triggered the need for design review, even though there's no physical expansion to the building. The parking lot meets all of the city's dimensions for parking spaces and landscaping. We've added a condition of approval requiring that some of the proposed trees for planning are upsized to 24-inch box specimen trees. Proposals exempt from CCO. Planning Commission reviewed this item on September 1st and recommended the City Council take the following actions, adopt the findings from the environmental assessment and approve the use permit and design review. The applicants present with us tonight and staff is also capable of answering any questions that the council members may have. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Longhausen, do we have any questions from Council? Okay, I'll start. I'm, I, I see the VAB in this proposal, Mike. And what I mean by VAB is the value-added benefits. I think as for the business, I think it would help them tremendously. And as business is expanded, it, it, it would definitely be in a benefit for them. And benefit for the city, I understand that this is city land. However, I think the benefits we would derive from it is, I guess, the cost of creating this parking lot will not be borne by the city, but by the applicant themselves. And given what may happen in the future, whether it's 20 or 30 years down the line, at least we have a developed parcel for anyone else who may want to come in there or whatever. So it's just my thoughts on it. Anyone else? Okay, hearing done, what we will do is move forward to obtain a, emotion for use permit UPR-8-20-14639 and design review DR-12-19-14364, is there a motion?
Motion to approve use permit UPR-8-20-14639 and design review DR-12-19-14364.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, since you read the whole, the whole thing out. And I believe I heard Councilmember DG Giovanni also in that motion. So can I, Councilmember DG Giovanni, can I say that you second the motion?
Yes, you can, Mr. Mayor, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much. So, any further comments on the motion? Okay, may I have a roll call please? Madam City Clerk, on the roll call please for item number six. Okay, Madam City Attorney, can I defer to either the City Manager or Assistant City Manager to call the roll?
Sure, but I thought she might be on, I don't know if she just lost connection.
Here, she's rejoining right now.
Okay.
Great, thank you, thank you. Okay, Madam City Attorney, are you with us?
Yeah, she's, there she is.
Sorry, here I am.
Okay, great.
Ms. DG Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye, thank you so much. Okay, so that motion passes. Moving on to item number seven, under award bids and contracts, appropriate funds and award of contract for the Geller Park Sports Field LED lighting project. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Fornazi, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Like you said, tonight's staff will be recommending City Council appropriate funds and award a contract for the Geller Park Sports Field LED lighting project. The action staff is recommending City Council take is award a contract to Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of $402,137.05. Appropriate $462,458 of parkland dedication fees to fully fund the project and authorize the City Manager to execute all necessary contracts to complete the project. City staff worked with Supervisor Canap's office to secure Measure K funds to support the county shared vision 2025 plan to create a community that is healthy, livable, collaborative, environmentally conscious and prosperous. This funding opportunity led to the creation of the Geller Park renovation project. Included in the project is a new ADA compliant restroom facility, new playground equipment, renovation of an existing barbecue area and replacement of existing tennis and basketball court lighting to more efficient LED lighting. As part of the design phase of the new restroom facility, the electrical distribution system serving the park was studied to determine whether there was enough capacity to serve the new restroom facility. The electrical study found that the retrofit of the existing baseball field lighting of the LED field lighting to LED lights is required in order to support the additional electrical load of the new restroom facility. Upon completion of the baseball field LED lighting retrofit, the restroom facility will be able to operate on the existing electrical service without upgrades to that service, which would come from Wembley all the way onto the premises. Replacement of the baseball field lighting with LED lights will provide enough electrical capacity for the new restroom building, will reduce annual energy cost and will improve the field lighting for playability. Without the proposed retrofit of the field lighting, the new restroom could not be served by the existing electrical service. The California Government Code authorizes public agencies to participate in a cooperative purchasing agreement like those established by Sourcewell while still adhering to the city's municipal code and adopting, adopted rules and procedures for the procurement of goods and services. By utilizing a cooperative purchase program, the city can streamline the process of procuring a contract for the Geller Park Sports Field LED lighting project. Sourcewell competitively bids construction tasks with preset unit prices and specification for various suppliers and services. Daly City Public Works staff have reviewed the specifications and bid documents provided by Musco Sports Lighting LLC to ensure that they are compatible with the city's scope of service. Musco Sports Lighting LLC is regarded as a leader in sports field lighting and has completed similar projects for local municipalities as well as city, the city's own Westlake Park back in 2000. A copy of their proposals attached for your review. The fiscal impact, the proposal from Musco Sports Lighting LLC totals $402,137.05. An additional $60,320.95 is needed for contingency, construction support and staff time for a total amount of $462,458. This action will appropriate $462,458 of unallocated parkland dedication fee to fund the Geller Park Sports Field LED lighting project. And with that said, staff, staff recommends the City Council award a contract to Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of $402,137.05. Appropriate $462,458 of parkland dedication fees to fully fund the project and authorize the City Manager to execute all necessary. And authorize the City Manager to execute all necessary contracts to complete the project. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor or council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fornazi. Do we have any questions from council? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to give a huge shout out to Supervisor David Canepa for being, you know, obviously for looking out for us once again here in Daly City. And working with our office to get the Measure K funds for this Geller Park renovation project. Supervisor Canepa has always been supportive and. We thanked him over and over again over the, over the year for what he's done, but I, I still, I'm just. Really excited and grateful for what he's done, so thank you, Mr. Canepa, if you are listening tonight. And then the other issue I had, well, I, I think I've said this in the past, and when it comes to projects that I'm going to see before. The council, I'm always going to ask the question of. What we can do to ensure that we are not contributing to systemic racism in any of our policies or procedures. And so I think that always, we need to examine how we are doing things and whether or not. The net effect is that we are excluding certain people, certain groups from. Participating and benefiting from these kind of grants and awarding of contracts, and here it's almost half a million dollars. So my first question is with respect to Sourcewell, which apparently is the, the co-op, and it's the way that this was. As that, this streamlined the process of procuring the contractor. So I have questions about Sourcewell and. What it does in terms of. How it selects people to make these bids and is there anything that either. Do we, like, like similar to the, the small business? You know, when we look out for small businesses, are we also looking out for minority owned businesses, that kind of thing? So I want to, I want, I'd like to know if you know, and I understand this might be a, a big question for you to outline to, tonight. But whatever you, you can tell me about Sourcewell and how it is that they get these bids and if it, if, if there's anything that. We can do to improve upon the minority community benefiting from it as well, and then I also have a question of. In the report, it talks about. While still adhering to the city's municipal code and adopted rules and procedures for procurement of goods and services. So I'm interested in knowing these rules and procedures we have for the procurement of goods and services. And whether or not we can improve upon that, and I, I would certainly like to examine it to see. If there, there are things in there, we might not, it not, might not be so obvious, but if there are things there. That we need to fix, we need to really see how it works, because if the net effect is that it excludes certain groups, I'm, I'm eager to change that. So those are my questions, and Mr. Chu or Mr. Fornazi, I hope you can answer them, thank you.
Okay, I, I can give it a shot, and then Mr. Chu can chime in if he has more to add. That's a great question, Councilmember. For, in regards to Sourcewell, they, they will advertise a nationwide RFP for goods and services. That is open up to, you know, anyone that, that is willing to submit a proposal. For this proposal, there were twenty. Well, this proposal was advertised in two thousand and nineteen and awarded in the fall two thousand and nineteen. It, when they first initiate or advertise the proposal, there were twenty companies throughout the U S that showed interest. When it came time to submit a proposal, only nine submitted proposals. And then, and then it was reviewed by an evaluation committee. And then three, three proposals were awarded, Musco Lighting being one of, one of those companies for their green generation lighting systems and their, and their. And their knowledge of sports field lighting. So that's, that's how Sourcewell does, does their business, they'll put out the RFP, they'll, they'll. You know, any company is free to submit a proposal and then they, they are evaluated. In terms of the municipal code, the municipal, the municipal code allows city staff to use. Agencies like Sourcewell, joint power agencies that, that do this government bidding. The process for government bidding, the, the municipal code allows the city to utilize those services to, to hire contractors and for goods and services. I'm, I don't know, Fratard, if you have something to add?
Yeah, just chiming in, so yes, Councilmember Buena Ventura, in terms of trying to target maybe small businesses or minority owned. That is something that we can work on, and I think Shauna mentioned it previously in terms of. Having our new finance director here, and that's something that we can definitely look into. Currently, the public contract code basically opens up the RFP to anyone that meets qualifications in terms of. Them being interested, you know, having, having the ability to, to bond for the project, and that's what agencies like Sourcewell did in regards to. Advertising the project, and so in terms of going through Sourcewell, it does satisfy our requirements, it's similar to. How we would do our own projects per the public contract code. With that being said, we can kind of take a closer look at our existing procurement policy with Tim Nevin and look at. Ways to potentially maybe focus on small business or minority owned businesses.
So, thank you, Mr. Chu and Mr. Fornazi, I, I think that's really what I wanted to hear, and so I'm glad, and, and it's clear that. Our City Manager is taking steps towards it by addressing it with you folks, and I'm really glad to hear that, that. That action has been noted and that we're moving in that direction, so thank you for that, and I'm really, really happy to hear that. My, my only other ask and maybe challenge to you and to Mr. Fornazi is, when you come across. A, a company like Sourcewell, if you can, and, and this goes for other agencies as well, if you're attending on, going through them. Is to do a deep, deeper dive, dive into them to see their record, their, if, if there are statistics available to see. Even though, you know, it sounds like what they did is they, they advertised, well, if you unpackage certain things, like. If you figure out what area did they advertise in, or what community did they advertise in, or is there some kind of barrier that. The minority, minority community. Has that maybe we don't know about, but. So my ask is you continue to do a deeper dive into these things and to really examine. As, as, as much as you can, a closer inspection of the process to see if people are being systematically excluded, and if there's a way we can change it for the better, so. Thank you, Mr. Chu, thank you for, Mr. Fornazi, those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura, are there any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a quick, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, or Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, I, I guess that includes veterans as well, so I know that's part of the package, that they would be a part of that process, RFP. And my one question is, if this, when this, upon approval, so tonight, and thank you again to Supervisor Canepa, like everyone else is thinking. But when would this project begin? Approximately.
If it's approved, if it's approved tonight. The contractor will begin working on submittals tomorrow with the hopes that we can have the project completed by Thanksgiving.
Oh, wow, that's exciting, because I know that that area, and a lot of people are really excited about that tennis court and all that area, so thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chu and Fornazi, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D G Avani, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I have two questions, and one is related to earlier around process and procurement. Or basically contracting with Musco Sports Lighting, I just noticed that, I guess, when you utilize that service, usually, I guess, we see. Different, I guess, contractors listed as far as like, you know, who actually applied, how much the bids were, and there were, there are comparisons, so. Prior to Councilmember Buena Ventura's comment, I just noticed that there was just one contractor, so I think it's also. Good to see, I know, you know, you're obviously utilizing. The, what is it called, the? What is the agency called that disseminates information, but I was just alarmed that there was just one, and then you mentioned the process that where there are more people that applied, so I think as far as. Understanding who else applied, as far as for us to see, you know, who were the other bidders. And just visually be understanding what that comparison is, is, is useful, I think. I trust the judgment of U S staff, I just, I just would like to see if there were other bidders, well, what was, what was the pricing, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's just, I think, more of transparency in, in that respect, but I definitely agree with. Councilmember Buena Ventura around looking at, and I know that's amazing that you guys are looking at ways to implement programs around supporting. An L B E program, a, a women owned, veteran owned program within even our city of Daly City, and that's exciting to see. Moving forward, but that's just something I think I noticed right offhand that. There was only one contractor, but I know it's the chosen one, but I think it's always good to understand, like, who are the other competitors? And then on, I think, technical basis, I wanted to know, because we're now utilizing LED lights, which I think is great, but we also needed to use it because that's the power that. We can handle, how long will these LED lights last us for, just an understanding of how long will these?
I'm not sure the exact manufacturer's estimated lifespan on the LED, I can definitely find out. Tomorrow and pass that information on to Shauna, so she can pass it on staff or to council. But there, the, the, the project includes a ten years maintenance free. It's, it's warranty, so, so we will not have to do anything for ten years. And, and they stand behind their project based on what I know from them, from other cities that have used them before, so, yeah, so for ten years, they. There's a, there's a maintenance free warranty, and I'll get the information on lifespan and pass that on to Shauna.
Thank you. Lastly, I do want to say, that's wonderful to see how the Measure K dollars are moving forward to the city of Daly City. And that it's hitting the residents who utilize the, the park very heavily, and I'm sure they appreciate having more lighting and just being able. For it during their recreation and also just for safety reasons, so thank you so much. And Supervisor Canepa, if you're watching, thank you always.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, any other comments? Okay, I have a few. So this evening, on this particular item, certain information and concerns were brought up. And I'm happy that the city is considering and moving forward in the right direction to ensure. In the bid process and flushing out the information. Vice Mayor brought up a good point, I know in the past, we've seen the different quotes. And that has generally been provided on the staff report, so maybe at least a minimum of three, and. And we may have to include more. On the staff report to show who and, and what bid it and what the bid was for and the amount. I would perhaps also make a recommendation, a notation on the staff report, whether it's minority business owned as well, so that we know. It serves two purposes, number one, that it was looked into and such and such apply and their designation, if any, and. I think that would go a long way as well, so just a thought. But anyway, my two questions are, first of all, I have to commend staff and Supervisor Canepa for moving forward on this. It's my understanding that the present lights were put up there by the gracious donation by Mr. Madden. And I do recall, under the old administration here in the city, those lights were turned off and not. Used as they should have been used, given the community concerns. I'm hoping that if we move forward with this, that we actually use those lights to provide the lighting at nighttime, of course. And considering the community's concerns as well, daylight savings time and et cetera, so I'm hoping. That would be the case, that we actually use these items and we're not just putting them in. The one big question I have is, we have lights there now, do we take in consideration of how we will utilize those. Earlier version lights, I'm sure we have other areas in the cities, in our city, that can probably benefit from the use of light in open space. Has, or was that part of the contract? Like a write-off for depreciation included in the contract?
So, Mr. Mayor, I can chime in on that, so typically, for any new lighting project that we're doing, especially field lights or, or, you know, street lighting. We're moving towards LED just because of the energy savings. Usually, the, the big cost in installing new lights is not the light itself, but it's all the infrastructure, the wiring, the conduit, all of that, so. In terms of these particular lights, that's existing, that's there, there isn't much value to them because they're so old. That typically you wouldn't be reusing them just because you don't know how long they're going to last, and they're very inefficient, and so that's why in terms of. And plus, you're not going to be saving much, because the, the, the majority of the cost is going to be in, in the infrastructure cost of wires, conduits, trenching. So, so we, we did not consider reusing these lights in a different location for, for tho, those reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Chu, I guess that's what I wanted to hear, and oh, by the way, nice, nice haircut.
Thank you.
All right, all right, so getting back to the issue at hand. Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'd like to move forward in entertaining a motion for this item. Was that you, Vice Mayor, motion to approve, is there a second? Okay, Councilmember D G Avani, any further discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Miss D G Avani.
Hi.
Ms. Manalo.
Hi.
Dr. Rod.
Hi.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Hi.
This is Sylvester.
Hi, thank you so much, everyone, that motion has now passed, and thank you for everyone and your comments on this matter. Okay, I seem to have lost the agenda, I'm looking for it now. Maybe someone can help me out, oh, wait a minute, I found it, I found it, thank you so much, okay, next item on the agenda. Okay, next item on the agenda is public appearances, oral communications. And I'd like to open it up to Assistant City Manager Stephen for further on this.
Okay, I think I have six or seven to read. So, I will start with. The first is from Michelle Kubota and it says, Dear Daly City Councilmembers, my name is Michelle Kubota. I have been a nurse at Seton Medical Center for 20 years now. For the past few weeks, we have been working under extremely unsafe environment. We are working regularly with no charge nurse or no break relief nurse. We just do not have enough nurses to help run our hospital in a safe manner. Yes, vacant position has been posted. Job fair has been held. However, it took months of nurses advocating for more staff before they took steps to increase staffing levels. Meanwhile, nurses are still leaving because of the unsafe environment and imposed conditions while our bargaining team works on getting a contract. We are unable to agree on a contract in July because what they offered was not comparable to the Bay Area standards. The hospital cannot keep staff because other hospitals are more competitive. We do not want to jeopardize our patients' and nurses' well-being when we are not getting enough help. We already lost a large portion of our accrued hours during the transition. To lose our sick hours during the pandemic when nurses and healthcare staff are risking their lives at work is an insult, especially to all the staff that have kept this hospital running for decades. AHMC now offers us less than two hours of sick pay, of sick per pay period, which is about five hours less than what we previously had. Nurses continue to work chronically understaffed without breaks or ancillary support, forced to work overtime and denied testing during exposures. The health and safety of our nurses continue to be compromised. I and all the nurses of.
Stephen, Stephen, I hate to interrupt. Can you let the Vice Mayor in?
Thank you.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay. I and all the nurses of Seton Medical Center are asking.
No, disregard, disregard.
I and all the nurses of Seton Medical Center are asking you to stand with us and ensure AHMC is held responsible for making the hospital safe so we can take care of our patient, our community and each other. Thank you so much, Michelle Kubota.
Thank you, Stephen.
Okay, the next comment is from Shannon Egan. Dear Daly City Council, my name is Shannon Egan and ICU-registered nurse for 20 years and a member of CNA. Thirteen of those I have spent at Seton. We have been through some difficult times over the past few years and still the employees have persevered because of our love for the hospital and the community. Once AHMC took over, we thought working conditions would improve. However, this has not been the case. They terminated all traveler RN contracts at the end of July, knowing we were short-staffed. With no new hires on the horizon and no travelers, we were forced to work OT without breaks and continued violation of state mandated ratios. This not only jeopardizes our patients, but also takes physically and mentally on the nurses. Who among you can say you work 12 hours without sitting down for at least a glass of water? In the last few weeks, due to COVID exposures, we are also wearing not only surgical masks, but N95 for 12-hour shifts, which is extremely uncomfortable when we are not able to take breaks. The new owners do not seem to be concerned for patient safety or the safety of its employees. The well-being of the people in our communities requires safe, effective and therapeutic care our nurses provide. During driving experienced RNs away from our hospital serves no legitimate purpose and undermines the interests of Daly City residents. We ask you to join us in holding AHMC accountable for ensuring we have safe staffing to adequately, adequately take care of our community. Thank you, Shannon Egan.
Even, just because of my hearing problem, could you slow it down just a little teeny bit?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
The next comment is from Julie Tran. To Daly City Council, I am sharing this comment on behalf of our nurses. Dear Daly City Councilmembers, my name is Arlene Sutter, COVID med-surg RN for 25 years at Seton Medical Center and a member of CNA. The bankruptcy and transition to AHMC have left nurses without any sick leave hours. Nurses and healthcare workers face highly stressful situations during the normal course of our duties. The pandemic and now flu season upon us have only served to exacerbate and amplify that stress. What would happen if we find ourselves too sick to work for an extended period? We continue to exhaust our PTO and vacation hours that should be used towards legitimate vacation time, not being sick. This strongly reminds me of the current political climate we're facing now. Republicans desperately trying to fill Supreme Court Justice RBG's position instead of waiting until after the election. They want to get rid of Obama's ACA, especially now when Trump is still in office. Why take away health benefits from hard-working America? The next comment is from Seraphin Co. Dear Daly City Councilmembers, my name is Seraphin Co. I've been ED RN for 20 years at Seton Medical Center and a member of CNA. I wanted to reach out on behalf of our nurses in the ED regarding the unsafe conditions. We are currently regularly holding admitted inpatients for at least 24 to 36 hours before patients are going up to respective units such as intensive care unit, ICU, telemetry or med-surg. It's very unsafe with regards to patient care because this delays the care needed for the patients. In addition to the unsafe practices, ED nurses are not familiar with the inpatient software, which is Arcus. In fact, we have not received any training in navigating the system. ED charge RNs, who are supposed to be out of count to help run the unit and be a resource for the nurses, now have to take triaging walk-ins, which means we have to take care of 15 to 20 patients plus provide support for nurses. This is unmanageable and unsafe when we cannot fully care for each patient due to short staffing. The continued lack of staffing along with nurses unable to take any regular breaks has caused many nurses to leave our unit. Lastly, COVID-positive asymptomatic staff have been able to return to work. How do we know that these employees are not exposing to their colleagues and patients? We ask the council to join us in holding AHMC accountable for ensuring we have safe staffing to adequately care for the community. Thank you. Okay, and then, and let me just pull up the next set. Okay, the next comment is from Shane Ward. Dear Daly City Councilmembers, my name is Shane and I have worked on the ortho/spine medical surgical unit at Seton Medical Center for nine years. During that time, I have worked as a union member with CNA in multiple actions regarding patient and nurse safety and keeping Seton open as an acute care facility. The nurses have worked hard over the years with you and other elected officials in the community to keep Seton open and serving the people of Daly City. Through multiple buyers and bankruptcy and years of uncertainty, we finally have a new owner. But because of the years of mismanagement, we are not out of the woods yet. We are critically and dangerously short of nursing staff. Every unit has been out of legal mandated ratio at the, at least once. My unit alone, three times in the last month. We've lost so many nurses during the years of this difficult transition and we, we are desperately in need of relief. Nurses are working 12-hour shifts with no charge nurse and no break relief, which means no rest or meal breaks for their entire shift. The nurses are doing the best we can, picking up extra shifts, shifts to help our coworkers take care of patients. However, working in these conditions for weeks and months on end is leading to exhaustion, burnout and even more staff leaving. It's incredibly unsafe for our patients, with nurses more likely to make mistakes or errors due to exhaustion. We need help now, whether that is in the form of out-of-state travelers or registry until the posted positions are filled. Seton cannot remain a mainstay of patient care for the city and county if there are no nurses to take care of patients. We ask you to join us in holding AHMC accountable for ensuring we have safe staffing to adequately take care of the community. Thank you for your time and support. I believe this is the last comment I have. I need to double-check that. It's submitted by Julie Tran to the Daly City Council and sending this letter to you all on behalf of our nurses. Dear Daly City Councilmembers, my name is Darlin Makaranas, COVID med-surg RN for over 10 years at Seton Medical Center and a member of CNA. We have been taking care of COVID patients since March, but yet we're being denied testing unless we are symptomatic. We have been exposed to some staff who tested positive, but we still can't be tested unless we are symptomatic. Nurses are expected to wear one N95 mask per shift, eight or 12 hours. We wear the mask most of our shift. Often, the moisture in our mouth area can affect the efficacy of our respirators. For the safety of our patients, fellow staff and our own families, we believe that it is important that, one, all frontline staff be tested regularly and not be denied testing when needed. Two, all COVID-positive staff should have a negative result prior to going back to work. Three, we be issued more than one N95 mask per shift and any PPE necessary to keep everyone safe. While I understand our current situation, I believe that it should be imperative that the safety of our staff, our families and our patients should be the utmost priority of our management. We ask you to join us in holding AHMC accountable for ensuring we have safe staffing to adequately take care of our community. Thank you. The next submission is, Dear Daly City Councilmembers, my name is Arlene Sutter, COVID med-surg RN for 25 years at Seton Medical Center and a member of CNA. The bankruptcy and transition to AHMC has left nurses without any sick leave hours. Nurses and healthcare workers face highly stressful situations during the normal course of our duties. The pandemic and now flu season upon us have only served to exacerbate and amplify that stress. What would happen if we find ourselves too sick to work for an extended period? We continue to exhaust our PTO and vacation hours that should be used towards legitimate vacation time, not being sick. This strongly reminds me of. I'm not sure if I read this one already, but this strongly reminds me of the current political climate we're facing now. Republicans desperately trying to fill Supreme Court Justice RBG's position instead of waiting until after the election. They want to get rid of Obama's ACA, especially now when Trump is still in office. Why take away health benefits from hard-working Americans during the pandemic? Our nurses ask you to join us in holding AHMC accountable for ensuring we have safe staffing and sick leave health benefits so we can adequately take care of our community. Thank you. And I believe that is the last one. I'm just double-checking real quick. That's the last one.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Take a drink of water. That was quite a bit. Job well done. All right, moving on. The next item is council committee. And there has been some meetings between September 13th and the 27th. Does anyone want to report out? Looks like we only had one meeting, development council meeting. And Vice Mayor and I attended a meeting to which we, it involved the discussion of the hotel property on Juniper Sarah Boulevard. And we are moving towards an ENA. And hopefully, this hotel, it's a hotel and it was a discussion regarding the hotel. And hopefully, I'm optimistic that we're looking pretty good and hopefully, we will continue to move forward to getting this hotel built. The other aspect was Carter and Martin Street regarding an ENA with Bridge Housing for the purpose of developing additional affordable housing in a parcel located in the northeast corner of Carter and Martin Street. They requested $45,000 for pre-development funding. And as of this date, Bridge Housing has not signed the EINA, but has indicated they will begin due diligence work by the end of this month. That's all I have. Vice Mayor, did I get mostly everything or did you want to chime in on additional information?
I, I think you got everything, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, are there any other council meetings that was not included here on the agenda that happened? Council committee meetings between September 13th and the 27th? Okay, go ahead. Pam, go ahead.
Yeah, I attended the online, obviously, the airport land use committee, which is under the SECA, which is the cities and councils of the government. And under that, actually, there was an item related to Jefferson Elementary School District and their teacher housing. So, for those at home that want to know about the land use, that actually what they make decisions on is the compatibility of certain projects and how it affects the SFO Airport. That's the main purpose of it. So, they found that, that obviously the JESD project and their housing will be compatible and we voted yes to moving it forward. So, that vote was just on that particular part. And then there was two Burlingame developments around that particular area. And they also found out that they are not any, any incompatibilities at all. So, they put three projects on there and JESD is moving forward with the teacher housing. And we, as we know, we haven't seen it come to the council yet, but it is a movement in that direction for teacher housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejavani. As a matter of fact, you just reminded me when you talked about housing, I do want to report that Hart Housing Endowment and Regional Trust had two things come up at this past meeting. Number one, you remember as council members, we all got together to go in with Hart and with, I believe, Aziz Palo Alto and San Mateo were much stronger together to apply for state funds matching. Well, apparently, we've got preliminary results back. And I think we were number four. There were some other projects throughout the state of California that scored higher than us. But as a group, we were at 75%. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed and we're looking forward to getting some of those funds. That's number one. Number two, there's been the discussion on ADUs and do we have Tatum here, Tatum's iPhone? You know, whenever ADU or additional structures are being built on your property, it has to go through a permitting, through our permits and design review and development for how it looks, whether it's too much for the community. Well, I'm happy to report that Hart finally used its grant funds to hire an architect to develop pre-plans for ADUs. So, basically, I think they're one studio, studios and one bedroom. So, basically, what they are going to do now is go out to the individual cities and say, hey, here are the plans that have already been drawn up. What do you folks think? Because every city is different and Daly City is in the mix. We will be seeing the plan. So, hopefully, our ECD department planning will look at them. And that takes the burden of someone going out, hiring an architect and paying for it if we have pre-approved, approved plans. So, basically, that was no cost. It's no cost to Daly City. So, I just wanted that folks know that that's coming. Okay, any other council reports?
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Dr. Rod, PCE?
Yes, I did. Retreat. You know how we love those.
Oh, okay.
I attended Peninsula Clean Energy Board Commission Retreat this past Saturday, September 26th. And basically, it was a report back on the strategic plan that was created over the past like year and a half or two years. And so, they looked at specific different areas in terms of strategic planning. One was organizational priorities, power resources. How does PCE provide good marketing and customer care? What are they doing in terms of public policy? How they're doing with finance, financial stewardship, community energy and organizational excellence? I think that they, they set out some targets for like, from now till 2025. I'm just going to share it. I'm not going to share everything. I'm just going to share a couple of highlights. But one of the goals is to get to renewable content by 2025 by 100%. One of the main, I guess, conversation points that came up was from the Citizens Advisory Committee and talking about how PCE, we need to start talking more about, and talking about how PCE, we need to start talking more about, um, you know, like the air quality and what's been happening over the past two, three weeks with the fires and having the orange skies and taking a very substantial step towards, um, environmental and greenhouse gases, which they're talking about. I mean, they're talking about community energy, about providing more electronic vehicles in terms of having stations, finding programs so that people couldn't afford it where they have e- electronic vehicle, programs where we can purchase electronic vehicles. So I think just kind of like looking at the past two, three weeks in terms of our air quality, PC is gonna be stepping up in terms of finding different ways to, um, address this. And we recognize this as a global issue. So we're looking at how we're focusing on the regional level, working at the state level. And, you know, there's that person in the White House that doesn't make it a lot easier. But, you know, at least they have these steps and goals in mind from now till twenty-twenty-five.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Rod. I find a lot of interest in PCE. I used to be on that committee and I, I tell you, it's a tough one. And my hat is off to you because, uh, those are more than two-hour meetings. And, uh, thank you so much for that. If council didn't know, we have a new Tesla dealership, uh, right across from Popeyes and Coma with old Nissan dealership, uh, they just opened. And Governor Newsom just passed, uh, um, a law saying that by the year twenty thirty-five, you cannot buy any gas cars. So, uh, we're moving, so twenty thirty-five, so, uh, all the young folks here, uh, be aware that I probably won't be driving by then. But anyway, uh, just some information to know. Okay, any other committee reports? Because I know we probably have some council events. So any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So I attended, uh, the Basca meeting on September seventeenth. Um, at that meeting, we adopted, um, basically the pre-audit budget status report, the investment report, and also the director's reimbursement report and the bond surcharge collection for fiscal year ending in June thirty, twenty twenty. At that, usually at those meetings, we do get a report from the San Francisco PUC. Also, um, on our action calendar, the board approved establishment of a new policy related to future use of water supply agreement balancing account. So the new policy guides the board in making written findings to justify the allocation of positive balancing and balancing account into consideration for the purposes set in water supply agreement. So it's just more of a accountability measure. Also, we approved a portion of the balancing account, which is about four million dollars to prepay any unpaid, unpaid existing asset balance owed to the San Francisco by wholesale customers. Also, we did not agree to enter into an amendment, uh, to a multi-party cost share for this project called the Las Vegas Reservoir Expansion. And so that did not move forward. Um, as far as our water supply support, um, the, the report says that our potable water use in July twenty twenty by Basca Agencies was down by fifteen percent compared to July twenty thirteen. So even though people have been home, it seems like the conservation of us using less water is, is shown. Um, and so, um, that's something to note. And let's see. Oh, we also did an evaluation of the CEO, general manager for the fiscal year of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, and, uh, there was an approval of an increase recommended by the chair. We also had an update on the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission called FERC around what's happening with the Don Pedro Project in regards to that. Our next meeting is gonna be on November nineteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm sitting here taking notes. But, uh, it's very important. Thank, thank you all. Any other reports?
The other part, not the, sorry, Mr. The next part, the number nine?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, with that being said, we'll move on to item number nine, which is, uh, a council committee report, I mean, not, uh, council reports, not, uh, basically the committee. Go ahead, Pam.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to bring to my, um, my fellow colleagues a big concern that, um, according to the new owners, AHMC, they're only gonna plan on hiring thirty-three nurses. Um, when there's been a big need, they've had a big loss of them and some are already bailing out because of the situation there. And they're not planning on hiring any traveling nurses at all. And because it takes a matter of four to six weeks to hire a nurse to begin with, and there is no contract that is not advantageous for a nurse to even come to Seton, that traveling nurses are needed because they're so understaffed. Again, that's only thirty-three nurses that they have approved to hire. And that is way, way too low to serve our community. And I know that all of us on our council are concerned about our community and their well-being. So that's why I wanted to bring it to, um, my colleagues' attention. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejavani. Uh, any additional council, uh, reports?
Um, I have a couple, Mayor.
Yes, yes, Dr. Rod, please.
So I've been attending, um, this, well, I guess it's a subcommittee. I've been, I've been attending this, um, Community Collaboration for Children's Success Racial Equity Action Subcommittee. So it's, it's, the acronym is CCCCS. And I've been working, um, with them in terms of creating, um, a strategic, a strategic plan to, um, advance racial equity amongst leadership in San Mateo County. And they came up with four different points, um, in terms of like encouraging, Black Indigenous People of Color leadership in, in San Mateo County. So, uh, one of the, um, so one point is training, training and programs for people of color with a racial equity lens, um, onto board and commission seats. Um, I believe I was advertising it, um, a couple of weeks ago about Urban Habitat and their, um, leadership program that they have to be highlighting that, um, along with, um, trying to find ways to, um, find mentorship for candidates and leaders of color advancing a racial equity lens. Also talking about, uh, adopting and implementing, implementing anchor institution principles and actions to ensure major employers and large organizations such as government organizations, businesses and hospitals are aligning the economic power of their business efforts with their mission to target local and in-needs populations. And then also finding ways of how to implement and adopt, um, budget equity tools when we look at, um, different forms of budgets. So that's been, um, something I've been working with, with, um, with folks around the whole county. Um, also, I've been, um, involved too with what's going on globally, um, in terms of in the Philippines and the passage of this law called the Anti-Terror Law. And I've been working with local Filipino-American organizations such as Malaya, um, Daily Cities Migrante, National Alliance for Filipino Concerns about how broad strokes of what terror means. So like, like a short critique of, of people in government in the Philippines can, can possibly place you within the lines of being a terrorist. So I've been working with some youth leaders, um, some organizations that are on ground that are, that, you know, I think some American citizens could be targeted as well for just critiquing leadership in the Philippines. So that's, that's, I've been concerned, I think, that people need to talk about what's going on in terms of like fascism that's happening not only here in this country but, um, globally as well.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Boy, you're doing a lot of work, man. All right, uh, any other council reports? Okay, uh, the next item is the adjournment. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Manalo. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I don't have the adjourned memory, but I have two adjourned memories this evening. I would like to adjourn in memory of Cynthia Barker. I met Cynthia, Mayor Cynthia Barker, when I went to London two years ago. At that time, she was a town councillor and later on became, uh, the first Filipino, Filipina mayor of Hertzmer, England. She recently died on September fourteenth, twenty twenty. But her role at town council included working with the community to improve the well-being of residents' lives. As a vice chair of the Entertainment Committee, she played an active role in ensuring recreation, was there for local residents. She was one of the town council representatives for the youth council. For Hertzmer, Cynthia served as a variety of committees, including Operations Review, Audit and Member Training and Development Group, which she chaired for three years. Um, and really a trailblazer in London, England as being the first, not only Filipino woman, but Filipino mayor in, uh, England. Thank you for that, Mayor. Also, I want to also adjourn in memory of Kenneth Parmally. He was born on October twenty-seven, nineteen seventy-one in Sacramento, California, to Harry and Julieta Parmally. He met his Francis Pasqualwell in high school through his childhood. Best friend Norman DeGuzman and they later reconnected freshman year in college. They dated for nine years and they tied a knot to raise three daughters. He was the ultimate girl dad, sacrificing tea times, bowling nights to coach soccer, deliver Girl Scout cookies, make school lunches, go clothes shopping and watch rom-coms and reality television. Ken had an iliac artery dissection, a rare medical condition. He was preceded in his death by his mother, Julieta. He is survived by his father, Harry, AKA Bong, his wife Francis, his three daughters, Lauren, Jordan and Avery, and his brother Jeffrey. He will be remembered for being a beloved son, brother, husband, father, uncle and friend that made you feel like you were the only person in the room. Ken's life may have been too short for many, but those who knew him well understood how much life he lived in almost forty-nine years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Dejavani, would you please proceed?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me begin by closing in, uh, memory of Dorothy Grossman. Uh, she passed away at the age of a hundred and four. She was born in what is now Pacifica, but raised in Daly City, Coma, and lived in the same house since nineteen forty-one, where she lived with her husband Carl and their two sons. She was the niece of our Daly City Mayor, John Fahey. He was the mayor during World War Two and also was the great granddaughter of our North County pioneer, Michael Cromerford. She worked for many years on the election board in our neighborhood in Daly City and knew much of the history in our area of Daly City. She was survived by her son, Carl Grossman. Secondly, sadly, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the firefighter, Charles Morton, that sadly, at the age of thirty-nine, uh, lost his life in a wildfires on September the seventeenth. He was part of the Big Bear Inter-Agency Hot Shot Squad Boss. People called him Charlie. They said that he was a respectful leader. He had been with the Forest Service for fourteen years. He joined them in two thousand and seven. He's survived by his wife, daughter, both parents and two brothers. And it's sad that he was battling the El Dorado Fire and when he lost his life and his sacrifice for us all. Um, so him, and then, um, I just would like to ask respectfully if, uh, at the end, if, um, Mr. Mayor and Buena Ventura like for me to say a little quote since it's Yon Kipoor after they closed the memory of Ginsburg, if that would be okay? It's gonna be in the highest holiday. And she passed away on what we call our New Year. But, because I know he's gonna close in her memory.
All right, uh, accepted Pam, and please stand by. What I would like to do is, uh, go before Councilmember Buena Ventura. So we need to keep everything in continuity so that Pam can do the final closeout. You know, it's sad whenever we hear the death of loved ones. And this, in this particular case, uh, the mother, the mom, uh, lost her husband a couple of years ago. And, uh, what has happened, uh, recently, Mr. Fitzroy Sarmiento, which is the one and only son, uh, recently passed away a couple of days ago. And it really hurts not only losing a loved one, uh, your spouse, but at the same time, losing a child, uh, before yourself. Mr. Sarmiento, uh, happened to be the same age as my son. And, uh, you know, it's all too young and they haven't lived their life. So I would like to adjourn in memory of Mr. Sarmiento. At this time, I would like to open it up to Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura for his, uh, announcement. And then we will close by, uh, Councilmember Dejavani. Councilmember Buena Ventura.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like us to adjourn in memory of the late Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Justice Ginsburg, uh, served on the highest court for twenty-seven years. Uh, prior to that, she led the fight for women's rights in the nineteen seventies. She was just an icon, a legal, cultural and feminist icon in the, um, in the law. And, um, she worked up until she was, um, eighty-seven, where she passed away, uh, just, uh, last week, September tenth, um, due to complications from, uh, cancer of the pancreas. She will, I think, be remembered as one of the great justices we've ever had for her positions on women's rights and a champion of, uh, justice for everyone. So it was, it's great sadness that we hear of her passing. And she, and she fought just resiliently throughout her battle with cancer. And she, um, uh, she really, her, her effect on this nation, on the laws of our, um, society, uh, will be forever felt. So, um, I'd like us to adjourn in, in her memory. And thank you, Justice Ginsburg, for the life that you led and for the battles you fought so courageously. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Very, very touching story as, uh, every story that we've heard this evening. So I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Councilmember Dejavani, uh, to, uh, make the final comment and close this out, please.
Uh, in addition, for Justice Ginsburg, as we know, she was the first, not just because she was the first woman Jewish woman, but is to note that she fought antisemitism and racial injustice for, for all of us. So she broke many grounds. But being that she passed away on the Jewish New Year, which was Friday, today is the Day of Atonement. Day of Atonement is reflection, forgiveness, immunity, stillness and appreciation. These are all things that, when I spoke to her, one of her rabbis, that she, uh, first, first of all, lived that life. And she lived it daily. And one of her quotes, the most famous quote was, "Fight for the things you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you." So I appreciate, let me have those words and blessings to all. Happy New Year, Yon Kipoor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejavani. All right, I, uh, this meeting is now adjourned. Everyone, thank you so much for being a part. Uh, stay safe, stay healthy. And we continue to be Daly City strong. Thank you all and good night. and we continue to be Daly City strong. Thank you all, and good night.